26, 2010, happy 90th anniversary of women's suffrage today. And would you please call the roll? Councilmember Francisco, absent. Hotchkiss?
Here.
House?
Here.
Self?
Here.
White?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Mayor Schneider?
Here.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on items not on this agenda today?
I haven't received any requests.
Did you have a public comment?
Yeah.
You need to go to the mic if you're going to go to... Oh, okay. Okay, so we'll close public comment and we're going to move on to the main topic of today, which is about employee compensation and benefits. And just as an opener, I did talk with Mr. Lopez, and I appreciate the staff and all the work they put into this. As I understand it, there are two major sections of this presentation. The first part is about compensation, and the second part is about benefits and pensions. And the request would be, let's have the presentation first on compensation, then we can open it up for questions, as opposed to a back-and-forth, back-and-forth. We'll do the compensation piece, see if we want to take a break at that point, and then move on to the benefits and pension piece to it, and go on to questions at that point. And this is being televised, I'm sure will be replayed, and will be on the city website when it's over. So, Mr. Lopez, thank you very much.
Excuse me, may I just say in advance, I wanted to thank the staff for doing this and apologize. I have a business appointment that will pull me out midway through. It's not from lack of interest or appreciation for what you did, but if you see me slip out, that's why. And I'll watch the rest on TV. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss. Mr. Lopez or Mr. Armstrong, do you want to introduce us?
I'm going to start out with just a few brief comments. The reason that we're holding this workshop is that during the budget deliberations, the council asks that we have a special session just on employee compensation and benefits. And this was well before the scandal in Bell, and this has been scheduled for some time. But it's especially timely, I think, now with what's been going on there. When we go through the presentation today, I want to remind the council that the City of Santa Barbara is a very complex organization. We've got over 1,000 full-time employees, probably 500 or 600 part-time employees, and the nature of the duties that people perform, in many cases, are very complex, they're very technical. And we achieve most of our work through people. Most of what we do is by city employees providing services either directly to citizens or indirectly to citizens, and it's 365 days a year, 24/7. And I think sometimes folks forget that, but our effectiveness as an organization is based upon the people we hire. The human relations or human resources system that we have is designed to attract and retain competent employees, and I think over the years, we've done a really good job in doing that. And we have to also be conscious of the ebbs and flows in how difficult it can sometimes be to attract and retain employees in this location. It wasn't more than three, four years ago when we were having a difficult time retaining a number of different types of employees, not just in the public safety area that got a lot of headlines, but things as basic as plan check engineers. We could not find competent plan check engineers, engineers generally. Water employees, we had a very difficult time, and continue to have a difficult time to attract and retain competent certified employees to manage our water system. And it's an ongoing problem there. So, right now, in these economic times, it's easy to look and say, you know, boy, look at these city employees, aren't they all doing great? But we're going to go through economic trends up and down, and we need to always keep that in the back of our mind. In terms of looking at our system, and the staff is going to explain it, I will tell you, in my experience, our system is pretty typical, and municipal HR systems are complicated. We deal with not only employee unions, but we deal with crazy schedules, you know, from the 410 program to the 980, to the firefighter's schedule, and it's a very complex way to run it. It's not just like you have, you know, 1,000 employees that all work 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. And so managing that system is very difficult. I can tell you also that our system is pretty transparent. You can go on our website, even before the Bell thing, and you can look up what people make. We don't have a lot of hidden compensation, like the Bell situation. It's pretty transparent. Even on the two appointed officials, Steve and myself, we're pretty much get exactly the same benefits that the other employees get. So you're not going to find any of that kind of stuff there. The purpose today, though, is to basically walk you through our HR system, our compensation system, the benefits, so you have a good feel for it. And I think it will help you in some long-term policy issues, especially on the pension issue, but also even on some of our benefit issues. So that's the purpose today, and I'll turn it over to Marcelo.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good afternoon. I'm Marcelo Lopez, Assistant City Administrator. This afternoon, we have a team presentation. Four individuals are going to be making presentations today. The purpose of the presentation, as Mr. Armstrong said, is to provide you and the public with a comprehensive overview of the compensation and benefits for all city employees. The presentation is divided into two parts, Part A and Part B. A compensation policy, we'll talk about these and how they apply to compensation, how salaries are determined, and how individuals are hired and placed within these salary ranges. In effect, this whole section will cover how our employee negotiation process, city policies and procedures, and the role of the city council in the decision-making process affects compensation. With the council's decision, we take a break after that, and then move on to Part B, which will cover the employee benefits. And there's a great deal of interest on the pensions, so we will have a focus on the pensions. As Mr. Armstrong has indicated, most of the information that will be presented today is available online, and has been available online for quite some time. But we have also put together a binder that will be available for review in the city clerk's office, in the event anyone wants to take a look at all of the details of today's presentation. It's quite a voluminous document, so the information is available, it is public information. We will move rather quickly. We're aware of the schedules that you have today, but we are going to give you as much information as we can at the same time. And unless there are any questions from the council, I think we're ready to proceed. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I'm Kristy Schmidt, Employee Relations Manager, and I'm going to cover a couple of topics. The first is about how we set our salary ranges. And the first is the policies that we follow, and then I'll talk about some of the procedures that we use to determine what appropriate levels of compensation are. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is policies. I'm going to go over the city charter, Section 1211, which is kind of the overriding policy with regard to salary setting. Also going to talk about the role of the municipal code, Title III, which is the title that covers personnel. And then labor negotiations, and how labor negotiations folds into all of that, and the requirements that we have under state law and under our municipal code for labor negotiations falls into the compensation picture. So the city charter, Section 1211, is entitled "Salaries: Annual Adjustment," and it states, you know, I like the preamble, it says, "In order to provide an understandable method of salary setting which will result in compensation that's reasonable to employees and taxpayers alike, the salary administration policy and procedures for the city shall be implemented in a manner consistent with modern public personnel administration." So it's a pretty good intro. I should say, it also requires that all salaries and benefits are adopted by the city council by ordinance or resolution, so we do not make changes to salary and benefits for employees that the council does not approve. City Charter, Section 1211, further states that the city administrator will review annually compensation of the city officers and employees, and it says that for those groups that are organized, our police, fire supervisors, and general employees, they are adjusted annually or otherwise to reflect the results of negotiations required by law. And it states that "the economic ability to pay compensation in any form shall be paramount." For managers, there's a little bit of a different section in the charter. It says, "Managers' compensation will be adjusted on the basis of comparability with other public jurisdictions with departmental divisions of similar size and positions," and that it will take into account the cost of living, recruitment difficulties, staff organization, and responsibility. The municipal code, Title III, kind of implements the requirements of the city charter. The two chapters that deal with salary and benefits are Chapter 3.04, which covers personnel and salary classifications, and that's the part that talks about, okay, how you're going to set job classifications for a group of jobs, and title them in one job classification, what a salary range is, and how many steps are in the salary range. All of that is laid out in the Chapter 3.04. Chapter 3.08 deals with employee benefits, and it's kind of an old chapter. It covers overtime and compensatory time. Some of our paid and unpaid leave policies come from 3.08. Talks about vehicle allowance for executives and council members. It doesn't really go into medical benefits, those are more covered by our labor agreements, but 3.04 does deal with benefits. And speaking of how this works with a labor agreement, most of the provisions of Title III of the municipal code actually predate the advent of collective bargaining. So when we adopt a labor agreement by ordinance, it actually supersedes the requirements of the municipal code. So if you go to the municipal code and there's something that says something different in a labor agreement, the labor agreement will control, not the municipal code. And finally, the other area of policy is labor negotiations, and this is a very important one for most of our bargaining groups. Labor negotiations are required by the Myers-Millie-Schraub Act, it's a state law. Also by our own municipal code, Chapter 3.12, deals with negotiations and how we set bargaining units and our requirements to negotiate in good faith. The city has to meet and confer to try and reach agreement on wages and benefits and other terms and conditions of employment. So we really do need to go in and talk and negotiate over wages and benefits, not just set them ourselves. So negotiators will go in and try to reach agreement based on the parameters that the council sets in closed session. And our bargaining units are the Santa Barbara Police Officers Association, that's probably our second biggest group, they have about a little over 220 members. Santa Barbara Police Managers Association is probably our smallest group, with nine employees in that group. And then there's the City Firefighters Association, the City Supervisory Employees Association, the General Unit, which is probably our biggest bargaining unit with 450 approximately employees, our Treatment and Patrol Unit, which is also represented by SEIU Local 620, and our Hourly Bargaining Unit, which is also represented by Local 620. So how salary ranges are determined, I'm going to talk here about some of the compensation principles that we, as staff members, use when we're analyzing compensation. Internal equity analysis, how we look at positions within the city to decide who gets what level of compensation as opposed to another position. Talk about external market analysis, and how we do salary surveys. Talk about labor negotiations again, and some of the other things that we negotiate as part of negotiations, and then how all of this is approved by the city council. So the compensations, and I should say, these are the compensation principles that we, as human resources and labor professionals, use when we're looking at compensation. An employee organization may not agree that these are the most important things to be looking at when you're looking at compensation, but this is what we, as staff members, look at and consider important when we're looking at compensation. First of all, our overall compensation goals are certainly to attract quality employees. We need to be able to convince someone to come to work for the city, potentially leave their other employer and come to work for the city, and that they should come to work for us. Similarly, retaining quality employees. If we are not paying at a competitive rate within the labor market, we're going to lose employees to other employers, and we do have periods, and as Mr. Armstrong says, it does kind of go into peaks and valleys there, where we do lose employees to other agencies because they're paying more or providing richer benefits. And then not to spend more taxpayer money than is necessary. Those are kind of our overriding goals for compensation. So within that, we try to provide compensation that's internally equitable, fair to people based on what they do within our organization, provides an incentive to assume greater responsibility and accountability. We have to provide an incentive for someone to take on the additional accountability and stress and personnel issues that come with supervision and management, or even a lead position, and so we look at that. Compensation that's competitive within our labor market, that's affordable and cost-effective, legal and defensible, so that we are complying with equal pay laws, the Fair Labor Standards Act, and other laws that apply to compensation of employees, and then appropriate for the city and its workforce at any given time. I mean, at this point, as you know, we are not talking about salary increases at all, and that's not because of much of this salary-setting philosophy, it's a matter of lack of money to pay for salary increases. So those are the overriding principles that we look at. When we're looking at internal equity, why we pay one position in the city more than another position, some of the things that we're looking at are the level of experience that is required for somebody to be qualified to take on the position, the level of education and training that they need to have to perform at the position, the complexity of work that they do, how difficult is the work, how complex is it, the responsibility that is assigned and the accountability that person has, public contacts, how much contact do they have with other organizations, with community groups, with the city council, also an important group, we'll look at that. Supervision that's received by the employee, and the supervision that they exercise over others, and then any other special skills that are required to be a fully functioning person in that job classification. And then finally, we are always influenced by, even though we may look at a position internally and say, okay, they're about the same, we'll look at employee turnover, you know, how quickly we're losing people in the job, any recruitment difficulties that we're having, and then the quality and quantity of job applicants that we're seeing to determine whether we might not be paying enough, even though it would seem to that we were internally. Some of the key issues we're looking at here are equal pay for equal work, making sure that people who are doing similar work, for the most part at least, are earning the same salary. And then compaction, making sure that different levels of responsibility within the organization have appropriate differentials between them, because at times, we'll get into a situation where we have a supervisor who's eligible for overtime, the management position above them isn't making enough extra to incentivize that person to apply for the management position. So we always want to make sure that we're providing sufficient compensation to incentivize people to want to move up in the organization. And then as far as externally, external equity, we do do labor market surveys, and we do labor market surveys, they frequently coincide with labor negotiations, but not always. We may find we're having recruitment difficulties, and human resources may do a labor market survey just on that position to see whether we're paying appropriately in the market. So there are various times where we might employ a labor market survey, and we're just going to kind of go through some of the simple parts of the methodology. So the goal is really to understand how our compensation compares with the competitive labor market, the people who we're competing for, for that applicant, or competing with, for our own employees to keep them with us. What we'll do is we select benchmark positions. We won't, when we're looking at a group of 450 employees in 100 job classifications, we won't necessarily, we won't survey every job. What we'll do is we'll choose a benchmark position that has similar required, that'll exist across various agencies. An accountant II would be a good example. There's always sort of a journey-level accountant in every agency, so we'll choose that as one of our survey jobs. And then make sure that the jobs we're surveying are similar in the scope of the duties, the depth and breadth of knowledge that's required for the position, that we're really comparing apples to apples across the different agencies. And then we'll tie other jobs to that benchmark job, so you can see, like, we'll survey an accountant II, and we'll come back and we'll say, okay, well, we're about a percent off the labor market for an accountant II. And there are other jobs that are tied to that, and we say, okay, well, the labor market's probably pretty similar for those jobs, so we're going to use that result for those other jobs as well. So that's benchmarking. Then we will select comparable agencies. For us, again, this is the way management looks at what a comparable agency is, we look for agencies that are in our applicable competitive labor market, that we're actually competing for with employees. So for most of our line employees, that's a regional area that we're looking at, Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, basically a commute radius, you know, people who could commute here. For managers and supervisors, because of the higher levels of experience and skill that are required in most cases, we're looking at Southern California as place that we're competing for managers and supervisors, so we'll look at agencies within a broader range. We look for agencies that are similar to Santa Barbara in various ways, for example, population, budget, services, the type of services they provide, do they have an airport, do they have a harbor, do they have a water wastewater utility, what types of community, the type of community it is, is it a coastal community, is it very tourism-influenced, how like Santa Barbara is it? And then, of course, the cost of living, and recently an issue for us, of course, has been housing. We have a very high housing rate here, and so that's been a concern. We also will include special districts for certain positions, like our water wastewater positions, we'll use Ghalita water, Ghalita sanitary, excuse me, or Ghalita water for a comparison agency, because that's really who we're competing for, and they're not a city, or a county, but they are who we're competing for directly with some, for some of our talent. Finally, we'll go to them, and we'll compare total compensation. Because agencies vary significantly in the value of their benefits packages, if you're just comparing salary, you may not really be comparing, you know, what the value of the compensation that the employee, the similarly situated employee is earning in another agency. So what we do is we look at the base salary at the full journey level, not the entry level. We'll also look at special pays as appropriate. For example, some agencies pay longevity pay, and so if you've been with the city for five years, you earn a certain amount. Well, really, that's a competitive pay, directly competing with us, so we will conclude that. We'll also look at health benefits. Different agencies pay more for health benefits than others, so we will compare that as part of the formula. And then we'll also look at retirement, and that is both the retirement formula, as you know, different agencies have, one agency may have 2% at 50 for their safety employees, another may have 3% at 50, and you have to have some way to acknowledge that when you're comparing across agencies. Also, how much of the PERS compensation, the required employee PERS compensation they're picking up, and then other special retirement provisions they may have. So frequently, that's what we look at as terms of total compensation. When we get salary surveys, we don't automatically use those results. So you'll remember, maybe in the 2000s, there were a lot of agencies that were going to formula-based surveying, where the labor unions wanted to get formulas in, where their salary increases would be based on, you go out and you survey, and then you set us at, you know, 75% of that labor group. And that's fine, because we want to pay you at 75% of that group. But what happened is, in a lot of cases, everybody in the area negotiated that, and then every time somebody surveyed, it would show that they were below, and they kept bumping each other up to, in kind of this circular upward whirlpool pattern, and things got a little bit out of control. We never went there with automatic increases, we've always used our salary surveys for an informational purpose only, and we're glad we did. And then generally, what we'll do is recommend increases to the median. We're looking at the median of the labor market that we survey, as we want to be at least paying the median compensation there for our positions. So here's that kind of an example result for a salary survey, just for your interest. This is a real result from 2008, and it actually did show us, we were significantly off the labor market here, not typical. Generally, we find we're pretty close to the labor market, but every once in a while, a position, you know, gets out there, and this one did. So you can see that the comparison agencies that we use were Oxnard, Santa Barbara County, Santa Monica, Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, and Ventura City and Ventura County. The comparable classification, not always the same job title. What we really look at, we get their job descriptions, and we look at, okay, is the job the same, not necessarily the job title? So each of those, we've looked at the job classifications and said, okay, accounting officer three is really the same as our accountant II. And then we'll compare max salary, do an adjustment for the PERS formula, do, you know, more of the retirement contributions are comparable. We deferred compensation, some employers pay into a 457 plan or a 401A plan, we don't, so we give them credit if they do that. And then the maximum medical, dental, and vision contribution, and we come up with a total comp number for each agency. We get the median, and we compare that down at the bottom to our own salaries and total compensation, and you can see, for this result, we found that we were, in salary, 6.4% below the median. In total compensation, we were 5.7% below the median. And so what that meant is, in order to bring our total compensation up to the level of the market, we had to give a 6.8% salary increase, which for us, that was, 2.5 of that was already, was negotiated across the board, so we gave the difference as a special increase. We don't always give that right away, like in a three-year agreement, we may say, okay, we're going to give that extra 4.3% over the next three years, not right up front. But we always try to feather that in, again, always based on our ability to pay, but that's kind of our goal. Finally, labor negotiations and how those fit in. We do negotiate with each of our bargaining units every one to four years, it just depends on economic circumstances and where we're prepared to find the best deal at any given time with one of our bargaining units. Again, we have the seven bargaining units. The things that we bargain over are market survey methodology and application. Everything that I told you about surveying, that's the way we like to do it. We walk into a room, and we may have a labor organization who really wants to look at a different agency as part of that, or wants to take one of the agencies out because they really don't think it's comparable. All of that's negotiable, so, you know, we come in with our position, and then we negotiate. Also, across-the-board salary increases, we'll also sometimes refer to these as COLAs, cost-of-living adjustments, although they don't always track, infrequently track exactly with a cost-of-living index of any sort. And that's across-the-board increases for all incumbents, and they get that regardless of merit. And Barbara's going to talk in a little bit, Barbara Barker, about how employees receive merit increases. These across-the-board increases are not merit increases. They also deal with overtime, comp time, standby pay, callback pay, shift differential, that's for graveyards and swing shifts, getting a little bit extra pay for that, paid time off, other types of special pay, bilingual pays are a really good example, people who speak Spanish, we give them a little bit of a premium to encourage that. And then uniform or other monetary allowances, insurance benefits, and pensions. So all of that is negotiable and ends up in our MOUs. And in your packet, you do have the compensation matrix, which lays out each of these benefits for each of our bargaining units. And that's the conclusion of my portion. Oh, no, no, actually, I take that back. All of this is approved by city council. We never do increases that, or changes to our salary and benefits policies, or just to the salaries and benefits without council approval. So changes to our municipal code are done by ordinance. New labor agreements, we also adopt by ordinance. Salary ranges for each classification are adopted on an annual basis as part of the budget package in the annual position and salary control resolution, which we've got a sample in your packet of what that looks like as well. And now I really am finished, and I'm going to turn it over to Barbara. Ms. Barker. Good afternoon.
So I'm Barbara Barker, I'm the Human Resources Manager, and I'm going to be talking about
giving an overview of our civil service rules, initial qualification for employment, emplacement within the salary ranges, performance evaluations and merit increases, and the discipline process. The City of Santa Barbara has a civil service system which helps to ensure merit-based employment. Standards and procedures for employment, such as hiring, advancement, suspension, termination, are outlined in our Article 10 of city charter, and also in Section 3.16 of the municipal Each of our job classifications has written qualifications, and we use these qualifications when we design our recruitment process, our job flyers, our exams. And we conduct exams, every time we do a recruitment, we have our applicant pool, we conduct an exam, and that our applicant pool, we conduct an exam, and that exam can consist of a written exam, an oral exam, physical agility, a combination of the above. Once the exam is completed, and we have our top applicants, then the top applicants are referred to the Hiring Department for the departmental interview and selection. And then, once an applicant is offered the job and, and selected, they are on probation for the first year of employment, and during that first year, they're considered to be at-will. And once they get past their probationary period, then they are, become what we call classified employees, and they're covered under the civil service system. Managers, most of our supervisors, and some other employees are not covered by the civil service system, and they're always considered to be at-will employees. Okay. New employees are usually placed at the bottom of a salary range, and salary ranges are usually approximately 20% from the bottom to the top. And so the top of the range is considered to be the journey-level salary, and so the top of the range is tied to the labor market median that Kristy was talking about earlier. In relationship to performance evaluations and annual merit increases, when an employee is new, they'll receive a performance evaluation at six months, and then at one year, and then at every year thereafter. If they are successful on their evaluation, then they will receive a merit increase at that annual time. And successful means on, on the performance evaluation, you have to achieve a score of at least what we call successful or exceptional. And an employee will continue to receive a merit increase until they've reached the top of the salary range. So if, if an employee is new, they've been hired at step one, then, and they continue to receive successful or exceptional performance evaluations, then it will take them four years to get to the top of the range, and they'll get a 5% merit increase each year. In relationship to our discipline process for classified employees, employees are entitled to due process once they've passed the probationary period, so they have a right to receive notice and an opportunity to be heard if they're going to receive serious discipline. And serious discipline is usually considered to be a demotion, a suspension, or termination, something in which salary is involved, something's going to be taken away from them. If, an employee then has the ability, if, if serious discipline is going to occur, they've had their ability, they've been noticed, they've had their ability to be heard, and serious discipline is still going to be given to them, then they have the ability to appeal to the Civil Service Commission for a hearing related to their discipline. And we hire, or, well, we hire 30 to 50 employees a year, and we have over 1,000 employees working for the city. Discipline does take a long time. For us, it's a lengthy process, but we usually discipline quite a number of employees, and I'd say, on average, we terminate maybe five to 10 a year, and out of that, maybe three to five will request a Civil Service Commission hearing. That's it.
And I just think it's important to note, it's in the charter, that the ruling of the Civil Service Commission is final. There's no appeal to council on that. That's in the charter, so.
Madam Mayor, at this point, we've completed the first section. I will note a couple of things that are in your binder, and one is the, the extensive employee performance evaluation document that we have. So it's a process that we take quite seriously, and in fact, in looking at the employee performance evaluation percentage of completion and time, we're about, close to 90%. This is the first time I'm giving the number to the city administrator, but it's, recently we've calculated that we're close to 90%, 89.80, or 89.6 it was, so. I'm run, I'm going to round it off to 90%, nearly 90%. So, I mean, it's, it's something that we take rather seriously, and it is something that takes a lot of work, and it's both for purposes of evaluating performance and also formulating action plans for the subsequent year. So at this point, Kristy and Barbara and I will be glad to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. That's music to my HR heart, so, about on-time evaluations. Any questions? Mr. Hotchkiss.
At-will means what specifically, as opposed to civil service?
In a nutshell, an at-will employee can be terminated for any reason, or no reason at all, provided it, it's not an illegal reason.
Right. And what's the percent, and maybe this is what you were speaking to, but what's the percent of appeals to the Civil Service Commission that are upheld? That is to say, the employee is retained in spite of what your recommendation is? Do you know?
They're upheld for the city decision, what, probably 75% of them? Yeah.
Or held?
Yeah. Yeah, management's decision.
That's it? Any other question? Nope. Ms. Self?
Thank you. My brain is going around. If they're 20% below when they're first hired, but they get 5% each year, wouldn't that be more than 20% because of an accrual? Till help, you know?
Actually, they start at step one, and then they get 5% at step two, I mean, you're at, after one year.
Right.
And then another 5% after two years.
But based on...
Another 5% after three years is 15%, and another five years, 5% after four years is 20. But it's not compounded. I think that's what you're thinking of.
Yes, that's what I was...
It's 5% from the original amount, from the base amount.
From the base. Okay. Right. Because it didn't seem like.
Right.
Thank you. And then the other question was, management, manager of a department, or, and does this apply to supervisors, that they're not subject to the civil service?
Some, some employees are, some supervisors are civil service employees.
Okay, and then...
Some of them are not.
One other question. At the end, I have all this payroll information. How is it sorted? Because it's not alphabetically, or by department, or by weight?
Highest total compensation on the list that you're looking at.
Pardon?
It's the highest total compensation, so if you look at the very far left side of your list there...
Or right.
Top page to the bottom page.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah.
Right. Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Other questions? So I'm clear on the salary range. The range that you mentioned had to do with the first five years of employment, the minimum to the maximum. So after five years of employment, then, increases, are they solely based on what's negotiated? Are there other merit increases on top of that? How do you, I mean, just want to be clear about how that works.
Once you're at the top of the salary range, the only salary increases that you're eligible to get are the across-the-board salary increases that are negotiated as part of negotiations. Now, that said, there are certain bargaining units, such as the Police Department, where they have special assignment pay, and they can, by, by taking on additional responsibilities and learning new skills, they can go higher, but that's not part of their base salary, that's a special pay that they're eligible for.
And then there are occasions when you're doing a survey on positions that may be below market, and then you just shift those people up?
We actually will shift the whole salary range up in that situation.
So, so if someone, let's say, take your accountant-two position there, that was 6.8% that you needed to boost, the range. If someone then, okay, but it, since it's less than 20, that's just the range that you're looking at, so then the, so, okay, so that means the top of the range now is 6.8% higher than what was there before. So if, so then there's an issue of compaction. Let's say someone who was an accountant-two had six or seven years of tenure, and now they're within that new salary range that was only really reserved for people in their first five years of employment. Do they then get a boost up, or not? Do you see where I'm, see where I'm going with this, with the compaction issue, if ranges themselves go up?
The ranges go up, and everybody within the range gets the same increase, so you, you keep your relative position within the range.
Within the range. But if you are beyond the five years employed...
Then you're at the top of the range, you're no higher than that. You're always at the top of the range, and then you would get the increase.
So if you become what's known as red circled, which means the range moves, and you now are within the range when you should be at the top of the range, do you move up to the top of the range? You see what I'm asking?
You stay at the top.
Yeah.
So if you're at the top, and your COLA suggests that you get a 6.8%.
On the mic.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Stay, stay to the mic.
Then, then you would maintain your relative position. So if the range goes up 6.8, and you're at the top, you're going to go up 6.8.
And you're at the top, you're going to go up 6.8.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did that answer the question?
Sort of, but I, it's beyond, okay, doesn't, I get it. I get it.
Well, Madam Mayor. Then the next obvious question would be the, the other range that's above, I mean, the other job that might be the next step in a person's career move, which might be to another job, that's right, associated with that. It would seem the compaction would also affect that as well. I'm sure that's a part of the complex reconfiguring, once, with something's been negotiated, right?
Exactly right. When we give one classification a, a boost, we'll have to look and make sure that we still have those appropriate differentials with the person who supervises them, and that we're still, we're, we're maintaining that in a whole structure. So it does get kind of complex.
But when, so when a decision's being made, then the information that, that is given to council, because we're the ones ultimately that would approve whatever changes there are, would include not just the change within a particular classification, but it would include the, the aggregate of all the cost changes that would adjust for the compaction as well.
Within that bargaining unit?
That's right. Exactly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, why don't we keep moving, then? And I'm not seeing any public comment slips or anything, so in case that, I'm seeing mostly staff in the room, but, okay, just want to make sure.
Madam Mayor, we're now moving on into the second section, dealing with employee
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council, am I on? Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Claire Turner with the Human Resources Department, and I am... There we go. I'm here to present Section 4, Employee Benefits. I'll start covering a couple, a few general principles relating to employee benefits. I'll touch on the medical, dental, and vision plans, what they are, and the cost structure, a bit about time-off benefits and other leave types. There, we have two non-pension retirement benefit, retirement benefit programs I'll discuss, as well as other benefits, life, disability, and some other smaller employee benefit programs. The City offers benefits, the benefits offered by the City, and the contributions are heavily influenced by negotiations. Different bargaining units have different priorities. This is best illustrated in the compensation matrix in your notebooks. It illustrates the variety, as well as the respective city costs of the benefits. The City retains the right to choose insurance providers. We consult with the Employee Benefits Committee. And while the City does retain the right to choose providers, it as well maintains the administration of the plan and the plan provisions. Staff works with the Employee Benefits Committee. We provide them the information, and in return, the committee provides input to staff. We have a Employee Benefits Committee meeting scheduled next week. The committee is comprised of member representation from each bargaining unit. We will be providing the plan review of the health plans, as well as our 2011 carrier renewals. And following that, we will bring that to City Council for approvals. The medical, dental, and vision plan, these are plans that comprise the Cafeteria Plan. The City offers different plans at different premium costs. Employees can choose through the open enrollment process from among two HMO plans, health maintenance organizations, three pervert, provider organizations, or PPO plans. We have a variety of plans with varying deductibles, from 500 to 2,500 for individual coverage. Employees can choose from two dental plans and a vision plan offering. And further, employees can choose to put pre-tax salary dollars into a flexible spending account. These would provide them with income tax savings, putting money into these accounts for withdrawal for eligible medical expenses with a non-taxable withdrawal from their account. And these are the programs that make up the City Cafeteria Plan. The employee health premiums are paid for a combination of City contributions, as well as employee contributions through payroll deductions. City contribution amounts vary by negotiation. Most employees get a certain amount of City contribution paid toward each type of insurance. For example, the, under the medical plan, the range is from 990 to 1,200 per month, the range of $52 to $83 per month for the dental plans, and $0 to $10 for the vision plan. Additionally, a limited cash-out benefit is paid to employees if they do not elect the City Medical Plan. They receive a benefit ranging from $230 to $500 a month. And this is in place to recognize that some, some employees do have coverage access through an employer group plan, and as such, they do not require this, the City coverage. Supervisors and managers, they receive a fixed allowance to apply towards all the insurance offerings. Again, the amounts vary. Supervisors at 895 a month, managers at 1,560 a month, and executives at 1,602. And again, in this area, any unused cafeteria dollars may be received in a cash-back benefit. Before leaving this area, I just wanted to highlight a little bit about the, the cost structure of the Cafeteria Plan. Over the years, the bargaining units negotiate their levels based on their, their priorities, and as such, some bargaining units have higher levels of contribution amounts than others. And this is illustrated in your notebooks in the area called Benefit Packages. And in that area, what I've done is scheduled out three enrollment examples of three employee groups, a police officer, a firefighter, and an SEIU general employee. And, and just to highlight the fact that of these three groups, you can see the varying amount of City contribution. And with these examples, with the three employees selecting the identical plans for the identical total premium cost, the portion of the City allocation paid toward those premiums ranges from 71% to 86%. And on a whole, the fiscal year 2011 budget, the citywide cost of the cafeteria benefits is 11.6 million, and the general fund portion of that is 7 million. That's inclusive of the smaller costs of the City-paid life insurance and disability programs, topics of a following slide. The next area is time-off benefits. The first area, vacation. This is a benefit, again, varies by bargaining unit. The amounts, the accrual amounts and the scheduled, the scheduled limits are part of negotiation agreements included in the MOUs. Employees accrue their vacation on a bi-weekly basis. As a component of the vacation benefit, there is an annual cash-out benefit, vacation cash-out, based on employees using a limited, a certain, a minimum amount of vacation time, and as such, they can cash out a limit of their vacation hours. The program is currently suspended, however, due to lack of funding. Additionally, personal leave are provided at four days a year, management leave, five, five days, legal holidays, nine to 10 days a year, depending on bargaining unit. And then under limited benefits, bereavement leave is granted if needed for five days, limited to immediate family members, sick leave, 12 days a year, if an employee is disabled. And further, under state law, employees may use up to 50% of that accrual, or six days a year, in the event they have to care for a disabled, ill family member. And then finally, the safety employees have up to one year of paid leave under Labor Code, Section 4850, for an illness, a job-related illness or accident. This slide speaks to the non-pension retirement benefits. There's, there's two key benefits here. The retiree medical premium contribution. This is a relatively modest benefit of this type. It's paid, conditioned on an employee having a minimum 15 years of City service. It ends at age 65. It is not a lifetime benefit, and the benefits payable, again, dictated by labor agreements, range from $9 to $10.50 per month, per year. For example, in this regard, for example, an exit, an exiting police officer with 25 years of service, for this benefit would be, receive $227.50 until age 65, and an exiting firefighter with the same 25 years of service would receive $250 a month to age 65. The sick leave service credit upon retirement, this is a benefit for all, all employees, whereby unused sick leave may be converted to a monthly annuity. As an alternative, an employee may take an alternate form of that benefit as a lump-sum cash payment. And in... And in, using some real numbers for the period 2007 to the present, the average, and the average lump sum paid to a police officer was $50,600, and to a non-safety or miscellaneous employee, the amount was $19,000. It's a one-time cash benefit. Life, disability, and other benefits. The city-paid basic life insurance is payable to all employees. The amount of coverage varies by bargaining unit. Further, there's a city-paid long-term disability insurance coverage for most bargaining units. This is a program providing for wage replacement in the event of an employee is disabled and able to work. The wage replacement is up to 60% of their salary and can be payable for up to four years. Other types of benefits displayed there, education reimbursement program. There's two component pieces for reimbursement of tuition, classes, textbooks, fees. Again, in this area, program is currently suspended due to lack of funding. The city does, city employees do have access to three home purchase programs, loan programs. The city's own program is a part of this, with 37 outstanding loans, about 4.2 million. Again, funding is currently suspended. Employees have access to commuter benefits, which provides subsidies on commuter buses, as well as carpool and vanpool. And then finally, the executive vehicle allowance is currently $539 per month. That concludes my portion of the presentation.
Before we get to PERS, any questions on the benefits? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The home purchase program of 4.2 million, when did that start? And, when did that start?
Madam Mayor, members of council, and Mr. White, I think it started roughly about seven years ago, maybe six years ago. You basically have gotten authority from council over a couple times to raise the amount we initially started with, I think it was $2 million. We've got it up to about $4.5 million now. All the monies have been loaned out, and they'll be repaid over time. But as Ms. Turner indicated, we have, we no longer have money to continue to fund that, no longer have the authority, I should say. It would require additional use of reserves if we wanted to continue that program or expand it.
So, and the source of those funds was our rainy day reserves?
General fund reserves. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the rate that it's being paid back at right now?
The rate varies, but it's tied to the rate that we receive in our investments from LEAF, the local agency investment fund. And so, as you know, that's a pretty low rate right now. It's about half a percent.
Right.
So that's the rate that they're repaying. And it's, again, it's just for the second part of the loan. They still have conventional financing for the first piece, 80%, and we've loaned them 15% of the home purchase, and they've put in 5% of their own money.
I couldn't hear that. Would you repeat that, please?
Sure. The loan that we have provided to the employees under the EMNA program is for the 15% portion, the second, if you will. They have all gotten conventional financing for the 80% of the loan purchase. We provided them 15% to the EMNA program, and then they came in with 5% down, and that's how it was funded.
And for how many years is that, are those?
They have 15 years to repay the loan, and it's amort, the payments are amortized over a 30-year period, but they are, have to be repaid in full with a balloon payment at year 15. Now, if they leave the city, employman the city, then they have to repay that within five years.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
I guess I'm continuing the line of questions that the mayor did. So we get half a percent from LEAF, and what percentage do we charge the employees?
The, again, the 15% loan that we provide them is repaid at the LEAF rate, so we charge them the same rate that we would earn on our own investments that we put into LEAF.
So essentially, we don't lose money off of that?
Right.
But it is a, an outlay of, it can affect cash flow, just not earnings?
That's correct. That's correct.
And, and this was, of course, started by, you know, the radical finance committee of myself, Dan Secord, and Roger Horton, right? You know, so this wasn't exactly a liberal or union-centered idea. This idea was to try to deal with attraction and retention issues for the city at a time when that was very, very difficult, and the housing market was...
It actually predated even, maybe, Member Williams, because it happened, I think, almost, I think it was like January 1st, 2002.
2002. So we just, we just added more money, money to it. That's correct.
We added more money to it, right. Mr. Hotchkiss, did you have something else?
How many people have taken those loans?
I think there are 37 people currently with outstanding loans with the city.
Okay. Thank you.
And they were in all the departments? It's not, it's only, it's not only an executive?
That's true.
As I remember seeing the list.
It was, the employees that benefited from the program were across managers, supervisors, regular employees, so didn't benefit one particular employee classification or group. I think everybody, you know, equally benefited, if you will.
Okay. Other questions on this before getting to PERS? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Samario.
So we're going to talk about pensions now, and what I want to start with is just a real brief discussion of the types of retirement plans that are out there. We'll get into then the city of Santa Barbara pension plans, as you know, that we have through PERS. We'll talk about how pensions are funded, and this may be a little technical, I apologize, but I'm trying to keep it at a pension 101 level. And then we'll talk about our city retirement rates and our costs, not only what we're paying this year, but what they've been historically, and how they've changed. And then just, finally, an outlook for the future of rates and costs. So first, starting with the types of retirement plans. It's really a conversation about defined benefit versus defined contribution plans. And just kind of by way of background, both plans are designed to do one thing, and they're redesigned to accumulate funds for the benefit of employee when they retire. And they're accumulated ideally over the term of their employment, and so when they retire, they would have those assets available to sustain them after their income from their job goes away, and then hopefully for the rest of their lives. What's interesting is that defined contribution plans are relatively new creatures. They've been around for a while, but when you look back prior to 20 years ago, defined benefit plans were really the norm, even in the private sector. Obviously, governments, obviously, had the defined benefit programs, going back as far back as the 20s and 30s, you might recall the whole, the pensions we had for our public safety folks under Article 15 and 15A. They were defined benefit plans. So those were really the norm across public and private sectors. It was in the late 80s, early 90s, when defined contribution plans came into favor for a number of reasons. One, because the defined benefit plans were potentially a little more expensive, because the benefits were sort of guaranteed, and we'll talk about that. But also, there were some employees, perhaps, that were kind of saying, hey, you know, during good times, I can really capitalize on those great returns. And so they were kind of clamoring for those kinds of options, at least to be able to capitalize on, on the good times, if you will, when the returns are really high. So just really, the basic difference between the two types of plans, defined contribution and defined benefit, is who assumes the risk, as well as the reward, for any investment gains or losses. That's really the key between, difference between the two plans. And if you look at the defined contribution plan, and a good example is a 401K. Here, what happens is the monies are deposited into the retirement account, and it's by the employer and the employee. Oftentimes, the employer will say, I'm going to put in a percentage of your salary into this account every year. Could be a specified dollar amount. The employee could match that, could make, put in more. In some cases, the employer may not put anything into that plan. It's all the employee whose contributions are going into it to fund the retirement. But here, the employee bears a risk and rewards of investment performance, and it's really beyond that, because if you think about it, if you have your own 401K, you have to become sort of an investment expert, and you've got to make decisions. What do I put my money into? Do I put it into stocks? Do I put it into bonds, treasuries? Do I go international? You've got to make all those kinds of decisions, and you've got to also factor in where you're at relative to your retirement age, because you might want to determine, you might want to be more aggressive at the beginning. But the point is, you've really got to become sort of a relative expert on, on investing and make decisions, because those are going to affect how well those investments perform, and how much you're going to be subject to fluctuations. But the employee, again, is the one that really suffers those rewards and risks based on that performance. And so because of that, the future benefit that employee may get will fluctuate. And if you think about somebody who may have been retiring, or wanting to retire a couple of years ago, who had a 401K or some similar kind of plan, pretty good chance that they're not retired, that they're going to have to wait a few more years, because they would, like everybody else, depending on what kind of assets, the investments they had, they probably suffered a fair amount of loss, and are going to have to delay their retirement plans, because that's, they have no guarantee of what their benefit is, just what the assets are there. Under defined benefit plan, however, the employer is committing to paying its employee not a certain amount of money into the plan, but you're really guaranteeing a benefit. So when the employee retires, the employer is saying, we're going to guarantee you a specified amount when you retire for the rest of your life. And in the interim, the investment performance or results are not really relevant to the employees. So the employer bears a risk of investment returns, and so if you think about an employee, they really don't have to worry about monitoring their investments, you know, deciding where the money's going to be invested. It's all done by the plan administrator, in our case, PERS. And the employee really is just, has to be wary about, when do I retire? What my salary might be? Things that, for the most part, are under the employee's control. So, and with all defined benefit plans, the actual benefit is dependent upon the age of the employee when they retire, the earnings that they are making at the time of retirement, and their years of service. Moving on to the city's plan, as you know, the city participates in the California Public Employees Retirement System, or CAL-PERS. I refer to as PERS. It is the largest state pension in the U.S. Its members include not only the state of California and our city of Santa Barbara, but most cities and counties and special districts in the state. There are some larger cities and some counties who have their own retirement plans that are not part of PERS. The city of Los Angeles, San Diego, even the county of Santa Barbara, they administer their own retirement plan and are not part of PERS. Here in the city of Santa Barbara, the PERS administrators administers three plans on behalf of the city. There's one for the public, for police safety personnel, a second one, and they're all separate plans with separate contracts, one for fire safety personnel, and then everybody else falls into the miscellaneous employee plan. PERS does offer a menu of benefit formula options, so it's not just 3% and 50, it's you can choose from several options. But whatever the benefit formulas are, they are, they're, at least the ones here in Santa Barbara, they are, were established over a period of time of years through the labor negotiation process. So for our safety plans, we call them, they're 3% and 50, that's the nomenclature. What it means is that the benefit amount is a product of the following three factors: years of service, the single highest annual salary, and it's not always the year when they retire, the year of retirement, because it could be somebody who may have gotten an interim appointment to a higher position, and then went back to that position later and then retired. So their single highest annual salary may have been different than with the last year of service, but typically, it is the last year. And then the, the percentage formula for safety plans, it is 3%, which means 3% of their salary based on number of years of services that drives their benefit. In this plan, the earliest retirement age is 50, and there is a maximum of retirement of 90% of compensation, and it's actually a little higher than that, and we'll talk about that. It has to do with the role of provision. In the miscellaneous plan, which we call the 2.7 and 55, its benefit factors are the same how it's calculated. The only difference is that the, the percentage is 2.7 versus 3% as it is in the safety plan. That 2.7 is based on a retirement age of 55, but employees can retire at age 50 if they like under this plan. They just get a reduced formula. So at age 50, it's 2%, and there's a, it's kind of a sliding scale up to 2.7 at age 55, at which time it maxes out at 2.7. The employee can continue to work, get additional service credit, here's a credit, but the rate will always be 2.7%. This is a table that I think is pretty interesting, a lot here, and I'm going to just highlight some of the key points, but this is the average of the last three years' retirements. You can see that in a three-year period, we had about 108, or 808 employees that retired. And you can see, we kind of organized them into the various categories, between fire, police, general employees, management and supervisors, and you can see their related benefit formula. You see the number of employees within those groups that have retired in the last three years, the average age of retirement, the average years of service, and the average final salary in that period, and then the estimated annual benefit. And this is a calculated number, but it doesn't necessarily mean that's exactly what they were, they were, they got, because they can choose several options when they retire, depending whether they have a spouse, for example, and they want that benefit to continue at the same level for their spouse, so they can do modifications to the benefit. But this is just a straight calculation, and it's probably pretty close to what they're, they actually received on average for all these employees. But just to kind of show you the, kind of how one is calculated, the benefit, if you take the fire line, you'll see that the average years of service, or service was 25.26. If you multiply that by their 3% number, the formula, and apply that to their, to the average salary, annual salary, that's the $72,598 that they will receive for the rest of their lives. What I find interesting is if you look down at the bottom, the right, you can see that the police is the highest number there, primarily because of the number of years of services on average. There was 28.15, the highest of all the groups. Though that number plus the final annual salary, 122 on average, is what drives the $103,000. If you look down below two lines, you'll see management salaries on average were 131, almost 132, but because their years of services were substantially lower, at 16.57, the estimated annual benefit on average was substantially lower as well. So getting into pensions 101, how they're funded. As I mentioned, there are really two sources of funding for a pension, and it comes from the contributions from the employer and employee and investment returns. The investment returns really are what drive how much the employer has to pay. They are kind of the variable, if you will. So when investment returns are great, our rates will go down, and you'll see that, what's, you'll see some history of our rates and how they kind of tie to economic conditions and investment returns. But when the rates, when the investment returns are, again, great, our rates are down, when they're looking poor, like we've had in the last few years, then our rates are going to have to make up for that difference, because they have to balance that in the end to get to where we need to fund our pensions. So in funding, in making, or at least developing a funding approach or model, PERS has to make some assumptions, and I've just sort of put them into two categories, and it's really answering the question, what is the projected annual benefit? What do we expect when an employee's hire is going to be the amount we're going to need to pay them for the rest of their life when they retire? And that's a tough question to answer, because they have to assume when they're going to retire, how old they'll be, how many years of service they're going to have, what their projected salary at retirement will be 20 or 30 years from now. And then beyond that, then how long are they going to live? So there's a lot of, you know, you can imagine how complicated these formulas are, but they, because they deal with so many people, thousands and thousands of people, that statistically, they tend to be pretty close to being right, even though in an individual case, they may be way wrong. Somebody may retire, or, you know, may live only five years after retirement, where they projected 30 years, for example. And then the other assumption, which is a fixed assumption now, at least, is how much are they going to earn on the investments of those contributions? And right now, it's 7.34%. So just to give you a quick example, let's, this, these numbers are sort of, you know, in the range of what we might see, but assuming somebody had a projected lifetime benefit, that they projected $100,000 per year, they're expected to work for the city 28 years in order to get that, and they're expected to retire at 55, and then live 30 years after retiring. What PERS does then is they say, well, how much are we going to need then when they retire? What, what kind of money are we going to have to have in the bank to fulfill that obligation so that when they retire, the money's there and they can pay out that obligation? In our example, $100,000 per year that they would receive if they lived for 30 years, the amount of money out the door is $3 million. That's the amount of cash that PERS would actually be writing checks for over a 30-year period. And actually, it'd be slightly higher, because PERS benefits have a CPI provision, so they do go up slightly every year. But the amount of money that PERS has to have in the bank when the person retires is not $3 million, because that will be paid over a 30-year period. What they really need to know is, how much do I need when they retire so that when I pay out that benefit over a 30-year period and invest the remaining amount of money at 7.34, what will I really need? And it's really just a present value calculation. You take the present value of those 30 payments of $100,000, use a discount rate of 7.34, and that comes up to $1.2 million. So that's the amount of money that they need 20 years from now when the person retires in order to fully fund their obligation that's payable over a 30-year period. And then the other, then the other part they do, the step two, is to calculate how much then the employer needs to put into this account in order to get that $1.2 million based on an assumed rate of return of 7.34. And whatever that dollar amount is, they express it to us, at least, as a percentage of salary. That's our rates. It's a percentage of their salary. And then the last step, which they do every year, is to adjust, because we know, regardless of what they assume, the actual will be different individually. And the grand scheme of things are pretty close, but on individual basis, the actual results will vary, particularly when it comes to investment returns. So this is a, an example of a funding model, real basic, but this is the horizon of 28 years that they need to accumulate the $1.2 million in my example, in order to make sure they had the money needed to fund the obligation. The first portion is the orange line, those are the employer contributions, and this is a theoretical sort of ideal situation. If all the assumptions were right, they nailed them, particularly in terms of when they retire, what kind of salary increases they're going to have, what kind of investment returns. This is how it would be funded. So that orange line are the employer contributions, and again, they assume an increase every year for salary, for, for raises and the like, 3 and 3 and 1/4%. And the yellow line is what they, if they invested that money, the contributions every year they got at 7.34, and actually got that every year, that yellow line represents the amount of money that they'd be accumulating... the amount of money that they'd be accumulating from investment returns over the 28 period, 28-year period. And then, the green line is the normal costs, or just the sum of those two. That's the normal costs or the ideal funding curve. And if everything worked out just perfect, they would have $1.2 million in, by year 28, that they need to fund, fulfill that pension obligation, most of which comes from investment returns. $800,000, or about 2/3 of that is from the investments, the investment returns on those contributions, and about 1/3 is from the actual contributions themselves. And that's why, when we talk about, you know, investment losses and gains, it has such a disproportionate impact on our rates, because that's really where the, most of the funding comes from. It's not the contributions, it's the investment returns. So, we have a bad year, or two bad years, it really has an impact on the other part of the funding that you need to make up that difference, the employer contribution. So, just to kind of talk about a couple of the concepts, because this, you hear these terms in the media and the like, and sometimes they're confusing, but again, the, wrong way. So, the, the green line is the, the normal cost or the funding curve, and the red line represents the actual results, and it will never be right on. It will never be right on. When you talk to the PERS folks, though, and you ask them, how much they're going to, are we going to actually earn on investments next year? They can't tell you what it is, but they can tell you what it's not going to be. It's not going to be 7.34. Statistically speaking, it's impossible for it to be exactly. It'll be somewhere up, above it or below it. So, we know the actual results will be dependent upon actual salary increases, the actual date of retirement, in the aggregate, actual investment returns and other actual, other actual gains and losses, such as employee outliving the projected, you know, lifespan or not outliving that. But those differences there, between those two lines, over time, represent sort of either you're overfunded or underfunded. And I'm just, this is, again, this is not reality, this is an example, but this sort of kind of mirrors what is typical in terms of economic cycles. You can see in year 12, I just picked that date or that year, as of that point in time, there was a cumulative difference in terms of funding, of where we should have been under that funding curve and where we were. We were short $47,000. We should have had $47,000 more. At that point in time, that cumulative differences, the difference between the red line and the green line is what we call the unfunded liability. It's a measurement of a point in time of the funding status, where we are on that, on that curve. It doesn't really speak to the sustainability of that program, it just speaks to a point in time. If I were to pick this line here, year 26, a couple of years before retirement, here they have a funding surplus, even though they've had unfunded liabilities earlier in the process, that in this particular example, they had a surplus of $12,600, so they actually had a surplus cumulatively from year 1 to 26. So, by the end, by 26, they're back on track. And if you think about what's happened in the last 15, 20 years, the recession in the 90s, the economic boom of the late 90s, the recession of 2001 and '02, and then what happened the last couple of years, you can see, it's just a cyclical kind of thing. We don't really see the kinds of things we saw two years ago, but it is a cyclical sort of funding approach, and we recognize that you're never going to follow or match that funding curve, but there'll always be variations in any given point in time. You can have a funding surplus or an unfunded liability. We had a big surplus in the year 2000, and we're now at unfunded liability. So, looking at the, our current retirement rates, the three components, you've kind of heard some of this, the employer rate, that's the variable portion, that's where, when investment returns are good or bad, that's where it's made up, is the employer rate. And it is a required amount by state law. Then, we have the employee portion. It's set by also state statute, it's 9% for public, for public safety employees and 8% for everybody else. And there is, in this case, there's an employer-paid portion of that. It's called EPMC. For public safety, as you know, the city pays a full 9% of the employee rate, so that's the EPMC for them. And for the miscellaneous employees, the city pays about 1.3% of that portion of the 8%. And the miscellaneous employees pay the rest. But it is a negotiated optional benefit, because there are implications to that. If you look at the roll-up benefit, not only are we paying for that, on behalf, that portion on behalf of the employees, but we are also reporting that additional payment as compensation to PERS. It's not, it's, there's compensation really is what their salary is, but when it comes to reporting to PERS, we report, for example, that somebody who is earning $100,000 a year today, we actually report to PERS $109,000, because we pay the 9% PERS on their behalf, and so, they get an additional benefit for that, for a salary being higher, because that's one of the variables or factors in calculating their benefit. And so, that is a benefit to the employee, because they get their retirement benefit is actually a little higher. But there's a cost to that, and that's the roll-up portion, and that means we have to pay the PERS on those, that PERS are 9%, because it's, it's an additional part of their compensation in a sense. So, that's what the roll-up benefit is. And so, here are the rates for each of our three plans. We have the police form, fire form, and miscellaneous. The employer rate, which I mentioned, that's the variable component, and that's the portion the city is paying. The EPMC, the roll-up and the total. So, let's take a look at police, for example. The city is paying 28.556, that's the employer rate, the variable portion. The 9%, which is fixed, is being paid for by the city, so it's employer-paid member contribution. And then, the roll-up is 3.38%. It's really, what that represents is the sum of those two, 28.5 and 9, as a percent of the 9%. So, again, we're treating the 9% as compensation, and we have to pay full PERS on that amount. And it mathematically works out to 3.38% of additional rate that we have to pay in. So, for police, we pay 40.1%, almost 40.1% of their salaries toward PERS as a, to fund their obligations. For fire, the similar, similar kind of approach, 28.7 is the employer rate, the EPMC is 9, the roll-up is 3.39, so their rate is slightly higher at 41.1. And for miscellaneous, the employer rate is 18.56. You can see substantially below the public safety, because the formula is, is less beneficial. In other words, 2.7 versus 3%, retiring at 50 versus 55, and that's why the employer rate's higher for public safety. The EPMC is 1.3%, that's the portion of the 8% that the, that the city is paying. The miscellaneous employee group is paying 6.73 of that 8%, and they started paying that, I think in 2005, and we'll see when, when they got an increase or an enhancement to their benefit, they went from 2.2% at 55 to 2.7 at 55. And so, the employees are paying for that enhanced benefit. So, this is a 12-year history of rates, starting in 2000, all the way to 2011. You can see that in 2000, the rates were pretty low, and for police, 9%. Really, what that meant is that the employer rate was zero, because that's just the 9% that relates to the employee that the city was paying. For fire, their employer rate was only 1.588, the other 9% is the, is the employee portion the city was paying. For miscellaneous, it was 4.02, and it's, and it's the 7% minus what the, at that time, the employees were paying of their employee portion. They're paying a portion of that for a few years. But if we start kind of moving down the timetable, you can see the impacts, and we'll kind of walk all through all of this, what caused these increases. In 2001, in for public safety, police and fire, you see the effects of adding the roll-up provision. Again, that was a negotiated item, where it's the PERS on PERS. In 2002, the city started picking up the remaining portion of the employee rate, as well as adding the roll-up, so it went from 4% to about 7.5%. And then, here in 2002, you see the effects of the public safety benefit enhancement. They used to have a formula, that 2% at age 50, that increased to 3% at age 50, and you can see the impact, starting in 2002, of that enhanced benefit. It went from about 14% to 21 for fire, and to 23 for police. And then, and this isn't exactly precise, but we know we had the recession in 2000 through 2002. This is where we see most of the impact of that recession, because there's always a two-to-three-year lag between the time that the person has investment losses and they start reflecting, reflecting in our rates. And then, lastly, which is, a lot of people don't realize, but you can see that the rates have been pretty stable ever since 2005, and that's largely had to do to the fact that PERS implemented additional rate smoothing techniques, starting in 2005 and 2006. They've always had sort of these rate smoothing techniques to avoid volatility, because we had volatility in late, early 90s, early 2000s, and they said, you know, from a budget perspective, it was hard for, for cities and counties and the like to really plan for these variations. And so, they had always, they'd implemented some, previously some rate smoothing techniques, but they said, we're going to be a lot more aggressive, and they started spreading basically the gains and losses over a longer period of time. It used to be three years, five years, now it's more like 15 to 20 years, where these gains and losses amortize, which means that we're going to see pretty, a pretty, a fair amount of rate stability for a while. And unfortunately, they did it at a time when our rates were at a historical high. We've had the impacts of the 2001 and 2, the recession. We've had these benefit enhancements, that we're going to be seeing these kinds of rates for a while, because even if we have big gains in the future, they're not going to have a material impact, because they're going to spread out over such a long period of So, you can just see that the growth between 2000 and 2011, pretty substantial growth in our rates and costs. And just to kind of recap why rates increased, again, the city adding the roll-up benefit, the safety benefit enhancement in 2002, from 2% at 50 to 3% at 50, the city picking up remaining portion of the, of the employer rate in 2002 from miscellaneous employees, the recession of the early 2000s, and then the rate smoothing implemented by PERS. And I would say that all of these contributed in, to varying degrees, and I don't know to what, really to what extent, but they all had a big factor in what the rates are today. You can't just say it's the economy or the enhancements, they're all, they all played into the rate increases we've had over the last 12 years. The rate smoothing is just going to keep them there for a while. So, here are the, the kind of other side of that, the cost. Those were rates we were looking at. Here's what that means in dollars. This is our general fund. We've shown by fiscal year what our PERS costs were, and what the total expenditures were in that year, and therefore, the percentage of retirement costs relative to the total budget for the general fund. And you can see, it's gone from about 3.5% to 14.7, but I think the important point here is that none of this reflects what happened in 2009, the losses that PERS realized that were substantial. They had $250 billion in assets, and the, in one year, went down to $160 billion, so a $90 billion loss in over a 12-month period. They're back up to over $200 billion, but that one year is going to have to be reflected in our rates at some point, and that will start in 2012. And they are implementing even a, one more rate smoothing, if you will, technique for that portion. Most of that loss is going to be spread over a three-year period, starting in 2012. And then, the rest of it is going to be spread over a 15-year period. So, we're going to be really paying for 2009 for about 18 years, about 80% of that over a three-year period. And so, based on the projection that PERS has provided us and some calculations I've made, if we assume all things being equal, meaning no salary increases over the next four or five years, our PERS costs will go up at $4 million, just because of what happened in 2009. They won't, they'll go up any, they'll go, they'll go up more if we have additional salary increases, of course, as a, on a percentage basis, but $4 million just because of what happened in 2009. So, it's a pretty big number.
Let me ask, could you go back just a second? So, the, the total, EXP means exposure, total, no, what?
Total expenditures, I'm sorry.
Expenditures. So, um, so what, during the year, during, say, the 2010 year, $14,423 was the PERS cost, that's how much that we needed in our budget to allocate, to pay towards PERS, right?
That's correct.
And from the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
And then, what's the total? I don't understand the difference.
Sure, and I'm sorry. PERS cost, those are the amounts we actually paid from 2000 to 2010, 2011 is the budget, but that reflects the PERS cost, for example, in 2000, $2.6 million, and what our total expenditures were for the entire general fund for all costs, salaries, benefits.
Oh, I, oh, sure.
Yeah.
I get, that's it. So, that's your general, the whole general fund.
That's just the general fund, actual expenditures, right.
So, then, you did the percentage.
Yeah, and the point is that, of course, the retirement costs, just because the rates have also gone up, the cost as a percentage went up relative to the budget or the total general.
Thank you, I now understand, I just was missing it.
And then, the last slide I have is just to, again, outlook for the future, rate volatility will substantially be diminished due to rate smoothing, and that's really an unfortunate thing, because again, unless PERS has a 50% increase in their assets, and they might say, oh, maybe I need to do one-time adjustment down, but the typical kind of gains they might have above their assumed rate of return, like this past year, they earned 10%, so a little bit more than the 7.34, that's going to have a minuscule effect on our rates over the next 15 years, because they're going to spread it over a 15-year period. So, we're going to be seeing higher rates, assuming everything else is equal for a period of time, at least five years, in my opinion. Not to mention the increases we're going to see because of the 2009 losses, which is the second bullet. And then, just the last point is that PERS board is considering lowering the assumed rate of return. We mentioned 7.34, and there's been a lot of talk about this in the press, about is that appropriate? Is it too aggressive? I don't know. I know that if you look at the last 20 years, that PERS has averaged about 7.9% rate of return on all their investments. It's gone up and down and all those things, but on average, over a 20-year period, which is kind of when you fund a pension, it's averaged more than what they've assumed. But I think that they are looking at it, because the future, maybe there's, the future is going to be different than what it was in the past. I think a lot of it is going to be political pressure to lower it, and what that means is that, to the extent they lower it, and I think they're talking somewhere around 25 basis points, it will have an immediate, potentially short-term impact on our, on our employer rates, because that's got to make up that difference. Actually, rarely, if they're assuming less coming out of investment earnings, this can have to be made up for employer rates. So, that's unfortunate, they're looking at that. What I really think on a long-term basis is what's relevant, is what PERS does to change, if anything, their, their actual investment strategy, because regardless of what they assume, ultimately, our rates will be based on actual returns on investments, right? So, they don't do anything different, if they still continue the same mix of investments in stocks and bonds and real estate, what they, what they earn is what they, is what they earn, regardless of what they assume. So, I think that the, this will have a kind of an immediate impact on us, but over a longer period of time, our rates will be mostly affected by what the actual rate of return is, rather than what they just assume. So, anyway, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. White?
Commander Merrill. The unfunded liability, which you mentioned, and the, the normal cost, that is something that is calculable year-on-year, is that right? In other words, can we look at that, at our package of retirement benefits that we're committed to, and how much money we put in, and know whether we're in a, where we are on that curve, whether we're in an unfunded or overfunded situation?
Yes, Mr. White, Councilmember White, we do get information every year from PERS, because every year, they perform an actuarial evaluation, so we can, so we know, in fact, we report that in our, in our annual financial report, our CAFR, what, how we're kind of progressing the funding status, if you will, where we're at on that curve. And as you know, we are in an unfunded liability status as of this year, because of what happened in 2009. But yeah, we track it every year, we report in our financial statements every year.
And where are we on, what is that unfunded liability this year?
Gosh, I don't know, but I think we are, on a percentage basis, we're somewhere around 70% of funded, which means we're about 30% unfunded, underfunded in most of our plans, but I don't have those at the top of my head, but we are definitely underfunded today of this year. 10 years ago, we were overfunded.
Right.
So, we are obviously, you know, feeling the effects currently, at this point in time, of what happened in 2009.
And we can, we can provide council copies of last year's CAFR, there's about two pages, but it's tens of millions of dollars that were unfunded right now.
Well, I'd appreciate learning that. Was, am I mistaken, that at one point, retirement ages were 60 for non-safety personnel and 55 for safety, and that that changed? Or has, has it been, has it always been, in your, in your professional lives, has it been 55 and 50?
Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah, when I actually started with the city in 1997, our retirement formula for miscellaneous was 2% at 60, and our retirement formula for police and fire was 2% at 50. And then, it went for miscellaneous to 2%, 2% at 55, and then, 2.7 at 55. And with the police and fire, it went from the 2% at 50 to 3% at 50.
So, the 50 for the safety personnel has, has at least been there since 1997 or preceding that?
Right. It's just going, you know, it basically got an additional 50% in value when it went from 2% at 50 to 3% at 50. It was a big jump.
Yeah.
And if you go back a little further in history, the, the public safety plans used to be, they used to have a two at 55 and a one-half at 55, and then they went to what's called the CHP plan, which was 2% at 50, and most of that happened in about 1980 to 85. In that period, that's when police and fire went to the CHP plan.
Okay, so it's been, what, 20, 25 years, something like that, that they, that we've gone from 55 to 50 for safety, and then more recent that we've gone from 60 to 55. And that has to be, I imagine if you amortize that out, that that's, those are big numbers as well, in terms of cost. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Can, can we get an idea of what, what the costs were previous to year 2000? Because a lot of people indicate 2000 as a sort of low point in the costs due to a high rate of stock returns. So what, do we, do we have those statistics, or do you remember anecdotally, or what? So, yeah, we were spending about $2 million in, in the year 2000. What, 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 what were we spending in previous years?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Williams, I don't know what, what they are, but I can certainly look that up. We have records going back to 1992, so we can kind of look at what our PERS costs were. You know, I don't know that we can go back with the rates, we might be able to, but at least with the costs and total expenditures in the general fund, we can go back that far.
I mean, I think that would be useful because starting the base year on one of the lowest years we've paid, just makes it seem like it's just up and up when it's somewhat cyclical based on stock market returns more than anything else.
Ms. Self?
Thank you. I want to thank you for helping to clear the head haze here in a very good report. One thing I didn't have in our packet, and I see Councilmember House does neither, is the 12-year history is not included in here. Could, could I get a copy of that? And I'm sure the others would be interested.
I think it's just the way the PowerPoint printed out on our copy, so I'm missing the table.
Oh, okay. Because black and white sometimes doesn't pick up color, or, okay, we'll definitely provide that to you.
See, Mr. Lopez has it.
Is it colored?
Yes, it's in color. They, we'll copy this for everyone.
We'll provide copies.
Okay. And now, overtime is not reported to PERS as salary, correct?
That's correct.
How about special pay, say, for a second language, for added education?
Ms. Schmidt?
Most special pays are reported as compensation if they are directly related to the services that are provided. There are certain types of special compensation, say cash out of your medical plan.
Right.
If they isn't related to you providing services for the city, those are exempted from kind of compensation. But for the most part, special pays are included as PERS-able compensation.
Okay. I really thank you for this, and I thank Mr. White for calling for this because I was trying to get my head around, and please, again, Jill, correct me if I'm wrong here. So if a person is earning $40,000 for the city, and they're receiving 40% PERS contribution, they're receiving 16, the city is paying an additional $16,000 a year for that $40,000 salary, that's pretty astonishing.
And then benefits on top of that.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about the retirement aspect. Is there anywhere in the private sector where this is, you know, unless you get stock options and all that, but...
Yeah, Councilmember Self, I think because in the private sector, you don't really see too many defined benefit plans, and for those who do have them, I'm sure that they've seen an increase or spike in, in their rates. But again, if the factors that drive the rates, at least in the city of Santa Barbara, is not just economic, but it's benefits that have been provided and enhanced over the last 10 years. But 40% is a big number, and it's, again, for a number of factors, it's gone up for the last 12 years. So in the private sector, I don't think you're going to see a lot of that.
And that's non-taxable?
No, the 40%, whatever the, the contributions are pre-tax, in a sense, but the employer, of course, that pays for their portion is not relevant.
Right, right.
And so from the employee's perspective, the amount of money that's paid into those accounts by the employer are not considered compensation when they, when it's paid in, but when they draw them out, when they retire, it is treated as taxable compensation. And the idea, of course, is when they retire, they probably lower tax rate and...
Right, right.
Same as a 401K.
It's just a 401K, that's true.
Right. Very generous one. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Just on that line of thought, other agencies, I mean, there's, like, one way to compare that as to the private sector, the other in terms of recruiting and retaining qualified workers is to compare it to other public sector employers. And so that goes back to, I guess, the earlier conversation we're having about comparables, right? About looking to where the potential employee base would be considering employment. So there's got to, that's got to be figuring into this equation. It's, we're not just a standalone, out in the middle of nowhere, organization. I mean, it'd be good to have a little bit of a conversation of that because I, it wasn't, it wasn't just Santa Barbara's a good idea to do that, and maybe you could talk to us a little bit about that dynamic.
Yeah, I think our retirement formulas are very typical of what you find out there. Our employer rates are very typical for what you find out there. A lot of agencies did pay the 9%, or say, 8% fewer and fewer, so that's one of the things agencies are negotiating away now. The roll-up, a lot, most agents, many agencies, not only go as hard as most, have done the roll-up as well.
Is your mic on?
So we're, it's not at all, in the public sector...
It's not at all atypical, what we're doing versus what other public agencies are doing?
The answer to that to the TV was yes. Okay.
Well, and while you're there, so let me just play that out a little bit further. So, but all that's negotiated, right? It's all something that has to be done by agreement with the bargaining units.
That's true, yes.
And then the other piece of that, if there were, say, sudden or precipitous policy decision to undo any of that, it would also have to be negotiated, right?
Absolutely.
It wouldn't be just like something that could be by fiat, the council could just do some big change or something.
Right. We'd negotiate any changes to the, to the retirement plan.
With, and mindful of the recruiting, recruiting and retaining impacts of whatever decisions might be made as well.
We'd certainly advise you of that.
Thanks.
Questions?
Just to be clear, if someone is, their entire career has been with the city of Santa Barbara, I guess, or with most public agencies, they're not putting money into social security, so that's something upon retirement they would not receive at all as opposed to the private sector. That's one difference.
That's correct.
There. So that's, yeah.
And in fact, there's actually an offset, too, even if they are vested in social security and are part of a, like, city's pension, there is some offset when they retire of social security benefits.
Okay. Can you put that table up again of the percentage of how much was put into, yeah, that one? So, just so unclear, because Mr. House brought up, you know, what's that total expenditure? So the, the middle column, the total expenditure, that's the general fund expenditure budget. So in 2011, 14.6, almost 14.7% of the entire general fund budget expenditures goes straight to retirement. That's what we're looking at here. And what you were, what you were saying in terms of the changes that we expect to see with the PERS rates due to the 2009 recession, is that another $4 million by 2015 will go up. So if the, if the, if the general fund budget stays at around $100 million, then instead of almost 14, almost 15%, we're looking closer to 19, 20%. I mean, if, if the, with status quo with the way the city is paying into PERS, I mean, that's where the negotiating might come in, right?
And in concept, Madam Mayor, that's correct, except that if you're adding $4 million to your PERS costs, you got to add $4 million to the bottom line of its total expenditures, so it's not going to be quite 19%, it's going to be more like 17.
17%, okay, just to put a percentage in. Or unless you cut, well, unless you cut someplace else.
Unless you reduce your costs, that's exactly right, to make up for that.
If everything else is constant and the only thing that goes, meaning no new revenue somewhere, no, no other way of trying to pay for that extra cost and keeping...
Right.
Okay. So just sort of looking ahead. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. House?
Actually, I didn't realize. I just learned that, that, that public employees, public sector employees do not get social security?
They, if they've worked in the private sector for 40 quarters, then they are vested in the social security system. But if they're involved in a government, they're part of a government pension program like the city of Santa Barbara, then there is an offset. And I don't know the exact formulas, but there is a fair amount of offset depending upon how much you're getting from another retirement program.
I see, and Medicare?
No, Medicare benefits are not affected at all, as it is. We do pay for Medicare, that's correct.
Oh, we do pay for that.
There's a transition.
1986, I think, there was a transition where everybody had to be part of Medicare. Prior to 86, if an employee hired before 86, they weren't required to be in Medicare.
Right. And I think the, a couple of years ago, we made some changes to some, I remember one employee, yeah.
Yeah, we had a few police officers who were pre-1986, and they were concerned about not being eligible for Medicare when they retired. And I think we were, there's a, there's a certain code where we allowed them to pay their share for the remainder of their career, and we paid our share in order for them to be eligible.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the city of Santa Barbara does not contribute to social security for any employees. The matching portion, employees don't participate in social security. However...
The mic's on.
However, city employees do contribute to the Medicare program.
Right.
For Medicare coverage at age 65.
Yeah, so if someone looks at their pay stub, they'll see the Medicare, but they won't see, they won't see social security taken out.
Right. A career city employee...
If they're post-86, got it.
So a career city employee would not have the social security benefits in their retirement.
Okay. I just bring that up because, because of the talk about retirement, what it means and with social security and what that means, but it's a little different for...
Well, it's helpful for me to understand a little bit, too, because I haven't, I'm trying to, just, I think, like Ms. Self, Ms. Self here is to match up, have an understanding of where all this fits. So on, on the pay stubs for my employees, for instance, there's this 15% or this, you know, social security piece, right? And, I mean, you've got, they've got to have that, take, part of it's their contribution, part of it's my contribution as an employer, and that's part of the business as usual for the private sector. But in the public sector, that isn't, in Santa Barbara at least.
Or the university.
Or the university, or...
Many universities.
Okay. All right, very interesting. So those...
But the county does? So it all, it depends. Okay.
It varies by agency.
It varies by agency, I see.
Return is a lot...
All right, thank you. This is something I'm very interested to learn at. I just really didn't know that until today. Thanks.
Other questions, comments? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Sure.
First of all, I want to thank the, the city staff team for, for pulling this together. It's, I think it's, it's useful for, not only for us who are starting this work as council folks, but I think it's something that the, the citizens of this community will really appreciate looking at. I hope that this will get on, I know this will get on, on the TV and gets cycled around a few times. I also think that you, you did a great job of placing it in context. First of all, the competition for staff, that's the, that is the history of bringing together a team of 1,000 people to run this amazing city, and the, the history of the, of the benefit system, which obviously has grown at a, when you look at it over a 10 or, 10, even just a 10 or 11-year period, it's grown at a, at a very fast rate. And it is, and we're also, we, we've watched and participated in the struggle to prune the city system over the last couple of years, and even looking forward, perhaps some more pruning, to make this a leaner, meaner machine, and yet keep all these parks, all these different systems going. And the pensions and benefits area is, as we are in the private sector, if I can say that I'm, 95% of my life will have been in, in the private sector, our expectations are reduced from what we, what I expected to be doing as a retired person. As Mr. Samario said, I'm going to be working longer and making, making do with a little less. And I think that this, this package helps to show we can be optim, we can be, hope for the best, but we want to prepare for the worst as well going forward. And these, some of these numbers brought together really helps us to participate in making those decisions. So thank you very much for laying out this context today. I think it's going to be useful for us going forward as well.
Mr. Williams?
Well, my, my, how things change. I mean, I think one of the most interesting elements of this, though, is, you know, in Batak and times, it makes, it makes people who are public employees look like they were really smart going into public service. But if you look at the, just the years just right before this, when I was getting into my career, most people thought it was idiotic to get into public service because compensation was so much higher in the private sector. And that has a lot to do with changes in the economy. So, you know, late, late 90s, tech boom, internet, you know, people are getting amazing levels of compensation in the private sector, sometimes different compensation, sometimes 401, 401, sometimes stock, sometimes base salary, but much higher levels of compensation. Now, things have turned around. And I think if you look at this chart, what's really important, though, is because the change, the changes that have took in place, taken place, is that it is in the city's interest to, when, when there are concessions or when there are changes to benefits, that we make sure that, that employees are paying part of those pension costs. I think that is a sort of responsible way to reform it, you know, instead of destroying the system, but make it sustainable. And I think that we, it's in the city's interest to do that in order to both balance city cost and, of course, in having enough good, qualified employees for the positions.
Thank you. Other comments?
I also just want to thank the staff for putting this together. My comments, being the HR person, I think I'm in the middle between the two of you. It's pretty funny. I think it's important, certainly the PERS consequences, status quo is, is something we have to grapple with and have to look at. But does, does that mean we throw it out? I mean, I think that, that's the, that's a big question, and, and how that relates, especially as a public employee, employer, in the recruitment and retention of, of employees. You know, you don't hire in the private sector a police officer or firefighter. So you have to look at that, those comparable comps there. So if, if that's the structure that we're competing against, we don't want to be put as an outlier and then never be able to recruit and retain qualified employees, because, I mean, it's actually the service that people come to expect that we want to make sure we provide. We also need to figure out a way in the city budget to pay for it, and, and I think, as Mr. Williams said, that one way to do so is trying to have some shared cost scenarios here into the future as opposed to just being extreme and, you know, slashing everything to nothing. Because I think the one thing that wasn't brought up here was turnover cost, you know, and not just in police and fire, but in all, all employees. And every employer looks at that as saying, you know, the benefits are not just a nice thing to do. It's an absolutely necessary thing to do, whether you're in the private sector or the public sector or any kind of employment, because, because if you don't offer a good, you know, set of benefit packages as well as a fair salary for the work that you do, you're not going to be able to both recruit and retain qualified employees. And I think we all know that. I think it's important, though, when we look at the information here, and that was really good information about the city, but it's also important to put it into context. So, you know, instead of saying, "Oh, my gosh, everyone gets this and that, and this and that, and that," well, compare, you know, to the private sector about employee costs and health insurance and everything else, and, and everyone's been struggling with that. I mean, the whole healthcare debate has been a huge issue because of the employer cost over time has grown. But yet, the need to provide that health insurance, for example, is, is fundamental in terms of, of keeping qualified employees in your workplace, because that's just the way health insurance is structured in this country. So my point being is, is to try to put this into context and say, "Yeah, there might be great benefits of, of public service," and there are, but also try to figure out what is the cost of not doing certain things. And, and so the big, the big issue, I think, moving into the future is how are we going to be able to sustain what's going to look like an exponential kind of increase in PERS costs based on the economic downturn, the way that's structured? And that, and that, I think, we need to work as, as a team, not just amongst the seven of us on council, but with management staff and all seven of our bargaining units so that we, we can keep what is essential in terms of the services that need to be provided to the city, and try to find a way that we can work together to make sure that, you know, that, that the money we have available is going towards the amount of services people come to expect. And that's, that's the big balancing act of what, who we are as, as an employer. We don't make widgets, we provide service. So, so the cost, most of the cost, that's why most of the cost in the general fund budget goes to salary and benefits because that's how the city gets things done. So I, you know, just want to put that in a little bit of, of context, and this is very, very helpful. I encourage people to look on the website and, and look up all these documents, or to go to the clerk's office if they want to see the details behind it. So, and thank you for putting this together, and thank you, Mr. White, for initiating this discussion many, many months ago. So I appreciate it. Anything else? Okay. Well, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.